Ready to go.
Okay, great. All right, being 6:30, I'll call the born historic commissioners meeting to order on January 21st, 2025. Note that this meeting is virtual and if anyone is televised streaming a recording, please acknowledge now. I know born TV.
I'm here too.
Jen is here and Jamie. Okay, great, Jamie. Thank you. If anyone from the public wishes to access the Zoom, they can call the conference line 1-929-205-6099 with the Zoom meeting ID 869-577-5550 and the password B O U R N E, all in capital letters. The Zoom chat was will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise their hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. A moment of silence to recognize our troops and our public safety personnel. Thank you. If there's no objection, I was going to forego the salute to the flag and the reading of the vision and mission and jump to agenda item four, if any objects from the the board. Seeing none, we'll jump to agenda item number four sewer service application for a 12 Cohasset Ave. I believe this is an increase in flow of 220 gallons per day for an additional two bedroom project at an existing duplex. Matt, do you want to talk about that? Is there any representation via Zoom Sean Murphy? Is anybody here who wishes to speak to the project?
I don't see anyone here, but I'm happy to speak to it. It was a relatively simple straightforward application.
Sure, go ahead, Matt.
Um, so, so as you stated, um, it's an existing four bedroom duplex. They're looking to redevelop the property to a um, to a two, three bedroom duplex and um, adding two bedrooms and an um, additional gallons of 220 gallons per day. The, there's not a substantial redevelopment. They're not changing the footprint. They're not tearing the house down. All of the work is in the interior of the of the property. Um, so there, they have a, uh, from, we called it preliminary allocation fee, but it's more just kind of an addition to their allocation of $1,100. And recently, we put the sewer system development charges on residential properties. Um, so this was kind of the first time we've done this um, for any residential property really. But it was more, it was, it was a 50% increase in their, in their development of their parcel um, for sewer usage. They've already previously paid into the system over the years. They've already paid a betterment. Um, so we presented it as a 50% increase to the total calculation and calculated $2,870.50 for sewer system development charge. Um, this would just, uh, in regards to the allocation spreadsheet. This would just come out of the residential, uh, the residential allotments, the residential reserve in the allocation. So you wouldn't actually see this on the allocation spreadsheet going forward.
And this is the, the 2%, the 6,000 that's on the sheet?
Um, on the allocation spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, there's 6,000 in the reserve, correct? So it'll be coming out of that. Okay.
Yeah, that 6,000 just kind of stays there as a placeholder. We don't calculate it in and out, but we're just assuming that it'll come out of that.
Any questions from the board on this project? Mary Jane?
Yes, so um, I did have the question about was it going to come out of the residential reserve and not be on the spreadsheet? But is everything come out of the residential reserve, no matter how much the gallons per day is? Like what is the, when does it come out of residential reserve and when does that not?
I think the standard practice, if it's over 500 gallons a day, we take it out. We take it out of the allocation spreadsheet. Anything under 500 gallons a day, we've been taking in the residential reserve.
So will this be over 500 gallons per day once they do this?
The additional gallonage won't, um, but the total gallons for the parcel will.
Okay, just, I, I just for clarification, I mean, I, 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 I'm, I'm fine with giving it to them. I just, that could be a workaround that, you know, do it one way and then we do it another way and then we get over the, we're in the residential reserve. It's fine.
So I did look at their previous usage and in 2024, they only use 74 gallons per day. Yeah. And in, um, so they're not a, a large user at this point already.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but the residential reserve is for 500 gallons a day per la, or less?
That's how I've been interpreting it.
Okay. And you're saying an increase of 500 gallons per day or less?
This is the first one that's come across my desk that that kind of had to be handled this way and all. Um, I have a feeling we'll see more of these with the ADU rules. So at some point, maybe to, to look a little more closely at it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, uh, entertain a motion to authorize an additional 220 gallons per day preliminary. It's a preliminary allocation, correct?
That's kind of how, that's how we called. There's not really a, a placeholder in the regulations.
Okay. All right. So, uh, and in staying motion for additional 220 gallons per day for 12 Cohasset Avenue, map 23.2 parcel 61 in the town of Born.
Second.
Move second by MJ. Roll call vote. MJ?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I vote yes, 4-0-0. Great. Uh, agenda item number five. Sewer service application to Kendall Ray Place. Um, this is actually for a reduction in flow from a preliminary allocation in past years because of a change of scope for this project at to Kendall Ray Place. Matt, you want to get started or do we have representation here?
Um, there is representation here if you'd rather them speak to the project.
Sure. And who do we have here for the project?
Hello, I'm Jeff Tocchio. I'm a lawyer and I represent Canal Cove Development. And also Josh Green is here from Crocker Design, the engineers. Um, because it's a change, it's over to Kendall Place and you folks back in um, 2022 had approved initial, uh, the initial allocation and that was 467 units with um, over 10,000 square feet of restaurant and then also commercial. That was 37,262 gallons per day was the allocation. Uh, we are working with group Canal Cove Development. We've already been through the planning board and we have the site plan review and special permit approvals. And that's going to be a reduction in the number of units and also bedrooms. And um, we are carrying 225 seat restaurant, which was what was prior count for the earlier approval for the allocation and then an additional 3,000 square feet of retail. That winds up being 34,755 gallons per day. And that was a reduction of 2,507 gallons per day. One of the issues or not an issue, I guess, but one of the additions uh, in this proposal as opposed to before is that the amenity space is increased because it's not going to be apartments. It's going to be condominiums and that's going to have a clubhouse and then also an outdoor pool as well. So those will be in towards the back of the property or the south of the property. And those we have as incidental to the other uses as they'll basically be you residents who are there living in the um, in the two buildings, who would be the primary users for those amenities. Um, with that, Josh has put together um, a grid and going through how we calculated the numbers. And he's here as well. If you've got any technical questions or calculation questions, we're available to answer any, any of your requests. We filed this before the expiration or the requirement of the prior allocation and we got it in. Uh, what was really good was that Sean Lewis and Jennifer Copeland uh, said, are you aware that uh, we were able to get that into you folks? So um, I believe that the um, the figures, uh, everything's put together. We got the fee and then um, there is a, as I said, it's a reduction in the allocation. Thank you.
Josh, do you have anything to add?
No, I think the only thing outside of that in the notes was the calculation was based on the Title V code, which seems to be in line with what uh, the town's done on other projects.
Any questions for this project? Mary Jane?
Thank you. Um, there was a, a little bit of differentiation in the paperwork. So on page 18 of our packet, it referenced retail of 3,000 square feet. But on page 28, it said 2,000 square feet of retail and professional and 1,000 square feet of restaurant and outdoor seating. So I'm not, I don't have a question on the allocation. I understand the allocation calculations. But I do have some questions when it comes to the um, connection fees. And, and um, I'm wondering, because we have some other examples like Hampton Inn and Keystone. And it's more an issue of like the units that are charged for sewer user units. And so the pool and the amenities, the clubhouse, the coworker space. Um, is this all going to be on one, one meter for water?
Believe yes, Josh. Do we have that?
Believe, let me just confirm, um. Believe the two separate buildings would be on separate meters. They have two separate services coming in for the main buildings. Um, and it looks at the clubhouse does as well. So it'd actually be separately metered.
Great.
So I'm fine with the allocation. I, I would like to have like some discussion at a future meeting about uh, unit users, the, the number of units that'll be charged and whether that changes the residential connection fees. I think it would be a minor change. But I, I'd just like to have consistency in what we're doing. So if at Keystone, we're charging them for a business center and a laundry and they're extra users and, and they're different. So I just want to have a clarification on that. I mean, I'm okay with the um, whatever the 34th, the new allocation number, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
I'm just have, I'm not sure about the connection fees. I don't think it would change the sewer development charge, but I think it might change the connection fees. So that's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Matt, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, they, they, they summed up all the questions I had. We spoke briefly before the meeting. Um, and just touched on any questions I had, so I am, I'm comfortable with the allocation.
Okay.
I do have one question that I'm, I'm sorry, now that you, uh, more of a policy question. They have already paid the fee for the preliminary allocation. Um, I know standard practices, it's not reimbursable. Is that how we're going to follow through with this project? I just want to have that stated clearly if that's how we're going to follow through.
Yeah, yes. If I may, the question on that was nets, it would, the preliminary allocation fee was a little over $41,000. And that's one of the reasons that um, I pointed out that we had requested the extension modification prior to the expiration of that figure, hoping that um, that would be applied. Um, you know, would be the same basic properties, same application, but modified and not have to um, not have to, you know, lose $42,000. And the fees are ample, the economic impacts to the town are going to be tremendous.
Take my hand down.
Okay, so um, I'll entertain a motion then.
I make a motion to approve the new allocation of 34,755. I think that's what it says.
Yes.
Yes.
With no additional allocation fees payable.
Thank you.
Second.
Allocation fees payable. Okay, so we have a motion to um, approve the new out, reduction in the allocation of 30, well, new allocation of 34,755 gallons with no additional allocation fees payable by Mary Jane and seconded by Peter. Any additional questions, concerns? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mary Jane?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 4-0-0, motion passes.
Great. Thanks, everyone. We really appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Have a good night.
You too.
Hey, agenda item number six, an update on the fiscal year 26 proposed capital request. And I believe this involves the grinder pumps project.
Yes.
Um, you're up, Matt.
At our last four sewer commission meeting, you asked us to look into, when I presented the, uh, the grinder pump project, I kind of presented a phased approach. We had requested $150,000 for the first year to do about 10 pumps. We could get a few more. We would try, but it was going to cover 10 pumps. Um, the board wanted us to look at doing all the pumps as one large project. Um, so we actually went out and we looked at all the grinder pumps we have. And we have 189 pumps that need to be replaced or updated to some, to some standard. Um, and we measured all the lengths of wires. So we had a really good estimate for this project. Um, unfortunately, the estimate was, because it's 189,000 pumps, the estimate for the job would be $1,863,000. Um, and that's what we request through capital. When I spoke with Erica about this, uh, we just spoke about the idea of bonding it. And she felt as though, or, or the standard practice for a pump project would be a five-year bond. So if we were to do that, um, we would add about $465,000 of debt estimated right now to the budget each year. Um, and the way that would, the residents would see that is the, um, this is just an estimate. We're, we're kind of working off, not really having documents, but I came up with the annual user fee would go from about $1,067, which is this year to $1,731 um, a year for all the users to offset that $465,000 increase in the bond. So I didn't know if, how the board wants to proceed. They want us to continue looking at the project at the larger scope. Keep it at the phased approach, but possibly do a few more pumps each year, more than $150,000 and try to use retained earnings. Um, so I just, this is kind of the two extremes of the project. So I didn't know, we wanted to kind of take your thoughts on the, on the project and the process you'd like us to move forward with.
That's a big jump.
Can you repeat that? Uh, that was, it's not in our packet and you said it very fast, so.
Sure, the, the increase.
So it would be, uh, it would be an increase of $465,000 of debt each year over the course of five years, which would translate for the users, the annual fee going from $1,067 a year to $1,731 a year.
Yes. Just estimated.
Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure.
Because we had something recently where um, I think it was the fire equipment where, you know, they said normally they do this for like so many years, but it's a longer. This is a tw, that these grinder pumps are like 25 years. So they're not really five-year equipment. So is there, is there any wiggle room on this borrowing or? You know, I, I, I have a bit of a problem saying that something that's a 25 year in our capital plan. It says it's a 25 year extended expected life and saying, well, we have to borrow it over five years.
Erica, could you speak a little more of that on, on that? That's a little out of my scope when it comes to borrowing.
I can. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I can speak to that. So that's the, I, I understand the useful life is usually longer. That is the standard five year. I would have to go out and get an opinion from bond counsel and see what they would recommend. It is likely that we could borrow beyond that.
That we could or could not?
It's, it's likely that we, we could, but I would have to check in with bond counsel just to make sure that they would approve the useful lives.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead, MJ. Sorry, I'm writing.
Yeah, so. So we, we know that the price has increased from what we got originally. We know that the information said that the price has gone up now, like for the pumps, like quite a bit. So it's, it's balancing. I mean, I think we should go forward with this on the plan and, and see what we find out about the borrowing. I'm, yeah. I, I, I'm, I, I, I think we should see about doing it. I mean, cause I don't, I think if, if we keep delaying it, we keep saying, you know, all right, well, we're only going to do this many and then we're going to pay for, for retained earnings, then every five ye, I mean, every year the cost is going to go up. I don't know what the, and I don't know. I mean, I, it's hard to say. And I think that we're in a situation where we have exposed electrical wiring, not in conduits. That's been a problem. We've been talking about this project for several years. And I'm, yeah, I, I don't know.
Any other, any other thoughts? Dean?
I would agree with MJ. It's, it's a lot. Uh, but again, it's an estimate and yeah, shipping away at it and doing something in the future may just end up costing that much more. I think we should keep going with the plan.
And, and have Erica researched like longer borrowing period?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would have.
And if we ban it for a while and pay down some and then put it, yeah, there's ways to do it that makes it less of an impact. So I, I'm.
I mean, it, over the course of, you know, we do a little bit over the course of how many years do, do we end up with the same number? Spending the same amount of money and the cost being the same for the user, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I like the idea of the possibility of perhaps looking uh, um, for a longer bond as opposed to the five years and um, trying to maybe navigate a little, navigate the cost a little differently, the spending to.
Yeah.
The bond. Um, you know, I mean, there's no denying the project needs to get done and at the risk of additional um, problems, especially electrical. Um, yeah, I think it's important to, to move forward and try to, try to work out the, the finance part of it.
As a ratepayer um, and user in the system, I, I do appreciate you looking into any and all options to meet this. It's affordable and it's least impact as possible. Because that, that first number earlier was a little scary and that's just without any overage. So um, if, if we can look at different ways that MJ and everybody else has spoken about, I'll be interested in see what the results of that of Erica's diligence would be.
Okay, so, and Mary Jane, did you have another question? So do we make a motion? Do we, do we need a motion to move forward with this project and navigate? Or do we hold off on deciding?
Well, I think it has to go on the capital plan. And so
Right.
We, we need to put something on the capital plan. Right now, we don't have it on the capital plan. So we kind of were waiting. Um, I, I'm, I, I would say we put this as, we put the this on the capital plan and uh, for borrowing and then request that the um, finance director, look at how long we can extend it out reasonably for the borrowing to reduce the impact on the ratepayers. Because it is a, a useful life of 25 years. And we're, we're, and the other thing that we have to look at is the concept of who's going to pay for replacement? Like, once we put in this infrastructure and if there are grinder pumps that need to be replaced before the useful life, they need to be examined to determine if there's wipes that caused it or other fats and greases or other things that impacted the, the, because it's not so much, I mean, the grinder pumps themselves are like $2,800. The, a lot of the cost is the panel, the electrical panel and uh, the conduit and the wire. So I think that was like $2,800 for the pump versus like the total cost of each one is like 8,000. So we need to look at our regulations to make sure that that there's, that we're careful about who's going to replace them if they fail earlier than the 25 years.
Marlene?
I just want to clarify, um, the comment was made to put it on the capital plan for borrowing. And I just want to clarify, do you want us to put it on the FY26 capital budget for borrowing? Or do you want it in the five-year capital plan?
I would say the capital budget. I mean, it's, we're talking about putting, we're talking about the capital plan and the capital budget, but it's the capital budget for this year as part of the five-year plan.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So FY26 capital budget slated for borrowing right now at, I'm sorry, Matt, was it 1.86?
Eight, eight, six, three.
Okay.
Five, one, three.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree, getting it in the capital budget fiscal year 26 in front of the five-year capital plan. Any other comments or questions?
Can I just say one thing quickly?
Sure, man.
It, it is on the capital plan as a phased approach, just if that, it, it is on there um, in that manner. And I just do want to say, even if we do this as a large project, it won't be completed in one year. You know, the, the idea of saving as much money on this project as possible is a lot of it being done in-house by the sewer department. Um, us managing it. So just, it's not gonna, we might buy 100 pumps at once. We might not buy 189 pumps at once. I just, I just want to make that just so we're all on the same page on that, that it will still be phased slightly, just so that's manageable by the department.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So do we need to make a motion to um, move this capital project to the fiscal year 2026 capital budget?
Yes, please.
So move?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Peter, seconded, was that Jean?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
And I vote yes, 4-0-0. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn sewer commissioners.
Thank you, Jean. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jean, second by Peter, roll. Jean, second by Peter, roll call, vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 701. Meeting of the board sewer commissioners is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Now we just stay on, right? Okay, so I will call the meeting of the select board to order. We have already given our qualifications on the Zoom meeting and we have acknowledged that Jamie Perkins is recording. And this meeting is being televised and recorded by Bourne Community TV, I believe. I don't, yeah, so um, is there anyone else recording? Or uh the meeting or videotaping besides Jamie? Okay. Uh, next item is community shout out and recognition. Does anyone have any community shout out or recognition for this evening? Um, I I want to say a shout out to um Bourne Public Schools and Mass Maritime Academy that we got a um email today that they're working on a college partnership as part of the new state college partnership um program. And I thought that was really great news. So I'm really glad to see that um collaboration. Um, next is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone with public comment on a non-agenda item? Jean?
Actually had a couple of shout outs. I think
Oh, sorry.
Things, yeah, sorry. I didn't get it. Um, Francis Darity to Lieutenant this morning, just wanted to congratulate on the promotion. Um, also, the um the boys' basketball team winning the hoop contest at TD Garden, that's pretty exciting. Well represented, and the girls' basketball team doing well as well. And also Sam Rayner, who is the the Bourne Swim team continues to succeed and um is qualified for some state events, which is pretty exciting. So.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um, and and I don't see any other public comment. So um, next item um was joint meeting with the Housing Authority for a discussion of possible vote to appoint Jay Knowles to the Housing Authority Board. I don't believe the Housing Authority posted a meeting, so oh. John, did you have a public comment on non-agenda? Is that your hand raised?
Yes. Yes, I do.
All right, so we'll go back to public comment on non-agenda.
Um, yes, so um for record, this is John York, resident of the town of Bourne, the village of Katamet. Um, I attended a meeting of the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation on uh January 8th, about two weeks ago. And at that meeting, they announced the creation of a new office within Mass DOT, which is called the uh Office of Mega Projects Delivery. And um the governor has appointed a director of that office, whose name is Lisa Pawansky. And she presented at the at the director's meeting uh a brief description of her office and then uh some details about the Cape Cod Bridges Program. Um, in her presentation, she stated that her office will be managing or will be responsible for the Cape Cod Bridges Program. And it sounds like they are going to be more directly responsible than the current project management, who in some sense might be answering to her office. Um, so, oh, just a minute. Sorry for the background noise. So I think it would be a good idea for the Board of Selectmen to engage with that office or for the town to contact that office if they haven't already. Um, and as we speak tonight, right now, uh Lisa Pawansky is speaking to the Cape Cod Sierra Club about the impacts of the Cape Cod Bridges Program to the outer parts of the Cape Cod uh due to traffic increase or other impacts of increasing the capacity of the bridges. So I I think it would be a a good idea for the Selectmen to invite Ms. Pawansky to uh address the town of Bourne at a select board meeting or other appropriate format. She seems to be willing to go out in public and uh and present or represent the Cape Cod Bridges Program. Thank you.
Um, I I did not see a posted meeting for the joint um for the Housing Authority, so I'm not sure that they had a quorum. Or maybe it was just um difficult. So we have um expressed to them that when they can have a quorum of their board president, a select board meeting, that we are happy to entertain the um appointment. And we did previously have a um an agenda item in November, then they didn't have a quorum, so um we'll keep trying. Um, next item for discussion and possible vote to approve the bond anticipation notes bands. Marlene, do you want to speak to this or Erica?
Sure. So in the board's packet, there is um a motion that if everyone is comfortable with, you're free to just move it as presented in your materials. Um, otherwise, we would ask that it be read in its entirety. Um, and Erica, if she would like to to have the details on the sale of the bands, I'm I'm um would like to defer to her for those.
Okay. So um we did have, we didn't really have a motion, but we did have a document that is the vote of the board of the vote of the select board regarding the sale of the bands that was in the packet. Pages five and six, so there's any question, and we did previously receive the bond review. Um So is there any questions from the board or is um available to make a motion? Anne Marie?
I I will make that motion um as presented in the vote of the select board.
Document.
Document.
Presented in the packet.
Presenting.
Okay, so there's a motion by Anne Marie. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Jean?
Yes.
Motion by Anne Marie and second by Jean to move the vote of the select board um as presented in the um in the packet.
For the sale of bond anticipation notices.
Okay, Erica, did you have a question or comment? You have to unmute.
I thought I read that she left.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble with my connection tonight. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, um, and I and I know I lost the connection, but I just wanted to update you on the band sale. Last Thursday, we held a sale of the bond anticipation notes. There were seven bids. It was a very successful sale. The um lowest bidder is being awarded to Chewist Securities at a rate of 3.161671. So it's very successful. We also did have a um our bond rating affirmed with S and P last week, earlier this month, and they affirmed our AA plus rating and our stable outlook. And so as you have done, you have voted, so um just make sure that we um have you guys come in and have a majority of the board sign the um the note. And we'll be all set to go. Does anybody have any questions?
Anne Marie?
Is that, is the um the rate consistent with what you're seeing out there, Erica?
Yes, the rate is consistent. And actually, the rate was better than it was last year. Last year, we were close at a 3.8. So we, so um it it did very well. And like I said, we had seven bidders. This time last year, we only had four.
That's great. Any other further discussion? Okay, seeing none, um it's a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And MJ votes yes, four, zero, zero. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda appointment of Jay Greenwood to Greenwood to the Commission on Disabilities with the term ending date of January, June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve it, the consent agenda of January 21st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Second by Jean, please. Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, four, zero, zero. Okay. Next item is the Town Administrator's FY26 Budget Message and Presentation.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I am sorry I wasn't able to give this to you in person last week. Um, but I will be using the same slide deck that was in your January 14th packet. And if you give me one moment, I will pull that up, hopefully. If someone can just let me know when they can see my screen share.
Yes, we can, I can see it.
You can see that? Okay.
I can see it, but some of it's cut off.
Some of it's cut off.
Okay.
Thank you. Hang on one second.
That looks better.
That is better. That's full screen.
That looks full screen to you? Okay, thank you. Um So before I begin going through the the slides, I do want to acknowledge that there are still quite a few unknown variables at play with this budget. Um, all of the town side union contracts are currently still open. So that leads to some uncertainty for the town side budget. Both of the school committees are still at work. So neither Upper Cape Technical High School nor Bourne Public School budgets are final at this point. And we are still awaiting the state aid and cherry sheet numbers. So with those caveats in mind, um we'll go through the the high points of the FY26 recommended budget. And I will say, this is just a recommendation still at this point, and there will be a lot more discussion leading up to town meeting. So as the past couple of years, it is a structurally balanced budget with no use of free cash. I do want to take a moment to talk a little bit about the use of reserves. And this is a bit more technical than we typically get into. But I want to make it clear to the select board that there are reserve funds, um the Finance Committee General Reserve Fund and the Special Education Reserve Fund are two that we typically use the most. Um, and I want you to understand the my approach to the use of the General Finance Committee um General Reserve Fund. And technically, when a transfer is made into the budget, technically, that stays in the base budget for the next fiscal year. Now, my practice has been over the past couple of years that though that any reserve fund transfers that are transferred into a department by the Finance Committee are stripped out before they build the next fiscal year budget. So I that is important because I want departments to not hesitate to bring issues forward. And I want to address things through the use of the reserve fund in a timely manner. But I don't want to give anyone the impression that those departments are quote unquote, keeping that money in their budget for future fiscal years. So I'm bringing this up in the in the context of free cash because in my mind the use of the reserve fund is a one-time infusion to take care of a distinct problem that has arisen in any given fiscal year. It is not a way to kind of boost your budget and use a one-time transfer in to then keep that money going into the future years. So I I know that's a a little bit more detailed than we get into typically in this presentation, but I do think it is important that everybody understands my approach to the use of the reserve funds. Which is why I'm confident in in saying that we are not balancing the budget using one-time revenues or one-time sources. Now, typically, and our goal is to provide a level service budget. And what that means is we want to budget in order to provide the same level of service to the public that we have provided in the previous fiscal year. Now, for this budget, I will say I can't in good faith, say that it's truly level service. We, I feel like this budget is moving somewhere between level service and level funded. And what that means is that a level funded budget is obviously the same dollar amount that we had last year. Now, I can't say that we're going to necessarily be level service across the board. There is, in this budget, there is the potential that um service provision won't, it's, I'm not saying it is going to be cut, but it may not be as as quick, we may not be able to be as quick to respond in some cases. Um, we are definitely seeing an an increase in the requests and the workload. And so if you think of level service, if you make a request to Town Hall for some service, let's say a permit, and you're, you know, in the past, you you you've been able to receive that service within a certain number of days or a certain number of weeks. That's where I'm saying it may take us longer to provide that service. We've we've seen increased demands and I'm just not able to fund the departments at the level to keep pace with those demands. But we're also not level funded. This budget, as you'll see in in But we're also not level funded. This budget, as you'll see in the future slides, is showing an increase. We are still using free cash to purchase quote-unquote "smaller" capital items. As you know, this is a very, very capital-intensive year, and we'll talk about capital more, but there's a lot of free cash that I am proposing be used for capital purchases. We are using fully now the newly adopted financial policies, and you'll see some changes in this proposal. The biggest, most notable change that's being driven is how the OPEB Trust Fund is being funded. So we'll touch on that again a little bit later. We are proposing conservative estimates for revenue. But I will say that compared to the past couple of years, the estimates are less conservative than in the past. So I would not say that we're being aggressive in our revenue projections, but there's not as much buffer as there has been in the past. We have bumped up our revenue estimates in order to balance this budget and build this budget. So that is something we will watch carefully, and if that becomes concerning, it's something we'll talk to you in the future. If our revenue estimates need to change for some reason, which would obviously have a big impact on any proposed budget. So I am including within the budget a $250,000 reserve fund. So that is the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund that I spoke about in the last slide. And the total bottom-line budget is $88,554,781. And this is at a 2.7% increase from FY25, which is the fiscal year that we're in right now. So some of the assumptions that we use to build this budget include level funding right now, state aid, because as I mentioned previously, we do not have the preliminary cherry sheet numbers yet. So state aid is just exactly the same as the final FY25 budget. We have not budgeted any increase for state aid at this point. As I mentioned, all of the town agreements are open. And because of that, you will see in the town-side expenses a salary reserve line. That's not something that you have seen the past couple of years because we've had known salary and wage numbers to work off of. So I have not put any I have not put any funds in the department budgets for a COLA or any sort of wage adjustment beyond what anyone, any employee would already be eligible for based on a step increase. So, but money is being set aside to fund those contracts in a salary reserve. And we'll talk about that. It's on a future slide as well. For the schools, right now, the assumption that I am holding in this budget is an assumed increase of 4%. I'm sorry that the percentage sign is before the 4 there, but assumed increase of 4% for Bourne Public Schools. And I will say that I spoke to the superintendent about two weeks ago now, and she, in all fairness, did tell me that 4% may be too low. So depending on where, how the school department's budget continues to evolve, we will continue to discuss this. And and as revenues and state aid come in, we'll look at all the pieces again, but this is something that we may need to rebalance depending on their final budget. So right now, the budget is balanced with Bourne Public Schools at a 4% increase. Likewise, for Upper Cape Technical High School, the assumption in this budget right now is that the enrollment will see an additional 12 students from Bourne at Upper Cape Tech. So that enrollment number, we have an estimate per student, that enrollment estimate of 12 has been increased into their base. And then I have put a 4% increase overall on top of that base. And I also had a conversation with the superintendent there about a week and a half ago or two weeks ago. And likewise, similarly to Bourne Public Schools, he also mentioned that a 4% overall increase may be too low. So there is definitely we will definitely be watching this closely, and there may potentially be additional discussions and additional joint meetings that are warranted before town meeting with the school committees. For general insurance costs, I am estimating a 5% increase. So this is our liability insurance, our property insurance. And this is what I have been using the past few years. And it's about what we've seen actually come in. So we're holding with that at this point. For our health insurance costs, we have made a budget adjustment based on actual data that we're seeing plus a 1.5% rate increase. So the budget adjustment that we're building into FY26 for health insurance includes the changes in the Medicare RX program that I have reported on previously that reduced the out-of-pocket limit for the members and shifted those costs to the town. So we're adjusting for that. This is the second year to catch us up based on that Medicare rule change. And we are also making an adjustment based on what we're actually seeing for plan selection by employees. So we typically hold an estimate for the number of people, the number of employees we expect to sign on to family plans and sign on to PPOs. And we have been seeing, over the course of this last year, that employees, based on their needs, are choosing family plans at a much higher rate than we have seen in the past. So we want to budget, you know, we want to budget accurately and appropriately. So at this point, we're putting in an adjustment, we're building an adjustment into the budget to account for the fact that employees are taking, are making plan selections at the family plan level at a much higher rate than in the past. Some of the constraints that we're seeing are some areas, and I know technically, we are not in an inflationary period. If we look at the economy as a whole, as a nation, I know that we're technically not in an inflationary economy. However, we are still seeing some areas where prices are just really kind of stuck at a higher level than than we're just used to seeing. And energy and utilities are one of those. So that drives a pretty significant change sometimes. So we are seeing some areas where costs are just increasing more than we would like to see. And we're building in escalators for those costs. We are definitely in a competitive labor market. In order to staff the town appropriately, we do need to do whatever we can to attract and recruit and retain competitive labor. So that is certainly at play in this budget. And then, as I mentioned before, we are just seeing demands for service that are really outstripping our ability to provide it. So at some point, we certainly are doing everything possible to work as efficiently as we can, and we're trying to do as much as we can with the resources that we have. We're trying to make wise choices and respond, you know, as efficiently and effectively as possible. But at some point, we we are at, we are reaching just our, we're just reaching our saturation point. And we are, I am, that is the biggest area where I would say we're just, I don't want to say we're falling short, we're just not able to keep up with what is being asked. So regarding the estimated revenues, and again, these are, please remember, these are estimates. This chart looks very similar to the chart that you saw last year. We did bump up local receipts only slightly. So that is, I think it's a 1% or a 2% increase over the chart that was presented last year. And that is where we're seeing kind of our less conservative estimating. So we have bumped up local receipts a little bit, a little bit more than being extremely, we are no longer extremely conservative, but we are still conservative with those local receipt estimates. So the municipal expenses are the town side of the budget, which are comprised of the general government, public safety, public works, health and human services, culture and recreation departments. So those are all of the town departments. And then you can see where I have added a set aside for a salary reserve to fund contracts as they close. So right now, as I said, with the schools kind of holding them at a 4% increase, the same is true for the town side. We're holding like right at about a 4% increase. And I guess I will say that as the contracts close, that salary reserve is subject to change depending on the actual contracts that are ratified. So for the school expenses, you can see that I'm holding the Bourne School Department to the 4.00%, as previously stated. And then the Upper Cape Regional Technical High School, the 10.24% increase is reflective of those 12 additional students being added to the enrollment, and then a 4% increase being added to the total base budget. Shared cost is going down because of the OPEB change in the policy. So this proposed budget funds the minimum requirement of the $250,000 within the budget. And that is, that's less than was funded within the operating budget last year. So the policy minimum remains in the budget, and then additional funds will be transferred out of free cash into OPEB as articles at town meeting. But they are not funded within the budget. So that is, this is really where you're seeing the biggest change that's being driven by policy. And of course, I should say that next year, this will not be a negative next year because next year, when FY27 is built, 250 will be in the column for, you know, the current year budget. So this is essentially a one-time realization of these funds. Debt service is also dropping. This is the second year that debt service is in the negative. And we talked about it last year. And my concern here is that we are losing that investment capacity within the operating budget. There'll be another slide coming with a chart. So this is the second year in a row that operating costs are eating up that capital debt service capacity. Last year, the number was a minus 13.18%. So this year is about the same, just very slightly higher. So the provision of daily services, the provision of kind of what it takes day-to-day to operate the town, are taking the funds that are falling off in the debt service. So this is something I'm not, I don't have an answer for FY26 right now for how to stop this, but this is something that over time, we want to put this investment capacity back into the operating budget. But that will pinch, that will pinch service provision. So here is the chart showing the total expenses kind of by function area, by sector. Again, very similar shares, very similar shares to last year. The shared cost because of how we're funding OPEB has gone down this year compared to last year. So the capital plan for FY26, the capital budget for FY26 is very different. Last year, my recommended budget had $4,367,200 in proposed capital, which is much smaller than the $53.5 million I'm recommending this year for capital. Last year's capital budget recommended $978,200 be used from free cash. This year, I'm recommending $2.6 million be used from free cash. Now, I know we have done kind of rundown the capital projects in December together. The only thing that has changed since our December meeting is that I have been able to add, I've been able to add an additional police vehicle into the budget. So if you remember, the police chief requested replacement of five vehicles. When we talked in December, I recommended moving forward with three. That is now up to four. After your discussion from sitting as sewer commissioners, we will revise the FY26 capital budget for sewer to include your direction on the low-pressure residential grinder pump project as borrowing. So we will work that in to the overall FY26 capital budget. And I will say, just because this $53 million is such a big number, this includes this includes $25 million from ISWIM borrowing to fund their new office and garage building. It also includes $18 million of excluded debt that will be subject to a ballot question in May for a new fire station. So there are two major building projects included in this number. This is, the ISWIM Enterprise Fund for FY26 is showing a very modest increase. I will say there is, due to the contracts still being open, this does not include adjustments for wages and salaries either. So as the ISWIM unit closes, this will be subject to change as well. But right now, we're, we're essentially showing approximately the same as last year. The Sewer Enterprise Fund is showing quite a bit of an increase. And I know that the DPW director has discussed these, discussed this with you. And I know that the sewer commissioners will continue to discuss this. And there is, obviously, we are concerned and watching any changes, any rate impacts based on changes to the budget. But we, on the sewer side, we do have to account for some increased costs, kind of those stubborn areas of increased costs that we're seeing, which really are being driven around sludge disposal in many cases. The proposed FY26 budget is in compliance with the new financial policies. Free cash, even with the large number being used for capital, remains above, slightly above our high, highest, you know, threshold there. So we are maintaining adequate reserves of free cash. General stabilization and capital stabilization are being funded per policy. Non-exempt debt service is, that is the investment capacity that we are losing in the operating budget. And that is falling below where we would like to see it. We're not out of policy compliance yet, but that's something that we need to watch. We are, we are losing that capacity. OPEB, OPEB, we have talked about how those changes in policy are driving the changes in the shared costs. You're seeing that reduction in shared cost. The Health Insurance Trust, OPEB, and other reserve funds continue to be funded and according to our policy targets. So here's that non-exempt debt service. And you see in FY25, we cross, the blue line is our, is our debt service. And the orange line is the kind of three, the three, we want to keep it between 3% and 5% typically. Now, you see in FY25, that was the first year we have fallen below the 3%. And this year is a continuation of that trend. So this is something that Erica and I are watching carefully. And honestly, by the capital plan recommending some additional non-exempt debt service, it will boost up these numbers in future years. But again, that, that is going to cause a pinch with service, money for service provision and operating costs. We have not done any long-term borrowing, permanent borrowing since last, since you've seen this chart last. So it looks very similar to what you saw last year. We will be going out for permanent borrowing for, after the, after the fall town meeting, there will be permanent borrowing for a fire engine. And there will be a permanent borrowing for the roof at Fire Station 3, which is headquarters. So those new authorizations, when they are borrowed, when we, when we have borrowed permanently, those new authorizations will, will change this chart for next year. There are some new initiatives built into this budget already that I want you to be aware of. We are funding some, some equipment and supplies for shorebird monitoring. The town actually has a lot of important habitat for plovers and other shorebirds. And we feel that we need to do a better job with our obligations under those endangered species laws to adequately track and monitor the shorebird population. So when we get into the department budgets at a future meeting, you'll see about $6,000 added to DNR to fund this initiative. You will see, when we get into the budget, line by line, that I am funding about $8,000 in a non-departmental budget for interpretive and translation services. These are costs we're currently incurring as people need ASL translators or, or other interpretive services for either disabilities or for communication for other languages. So we are currently already seeing and providing these services, but we're kind of piecing it together out of department's budget. So this is the first year where, where we're actually funding the, the need, funding the budget to meet the need. I am recommending two clerical upgrades in this budget for one clerical position in my office, in the town administrator's office, and a clerical position in the town clerk's office. When we, again, get into the budget's details, line by line, the reasons for both of these upgrades are these employees are already working at these levels. So the town clerk's office, the upgrade is from a two to a four. And right now, that position that is the two is already working simultaneously with the position that's already a four. They are, they're working interchangeably and they're backing each other up. Likewise, for the TA office, additional duties surrounding special events, licensing, managing marijuana applicants, be essentially becoming our webmaster. Those duties have been added to our clerical position there and are being done and really is triggering the need for an upgrade. For DPW, this budget creates two promotional opportunities. And we'll walk through that when we get to the DPW budget at a future meeting. But these are not new positions. We are, we are creating the, we're creating an upgrade opportunity so that some, an existing, an existing employee within the department can bid on a higher position and go through the promotional process to select those. So there's funds built into the DPW to create two higher graded positions, but they're not, they're not new positions. This budget does fund a full-time building inspector. I, that's something I've been looking to do for a number of years now. And I know that I've talked, I've spoken to you about it, I think, at least twice in previous budget presentations. This is, this is not a, this is not a full-time new position. In order to fund this full-time position, I will be eliminating the part-time building inspector funds. So right now, we have a part-time building inspector. Those funds will be used to offset the cost of the full-time position. But we desperately are in need of a full-time building inspector and an additional full-time building inspector. So I want to bring forward some of the items that are not in this budget, but that are important. And I want to kind of put them in the back of your mind for the future. It is, I think it's necessary in the future to create an emergency medical services officer within the fire department. This is an extremely important, this is an extremely important service that we provide to the public by being the ambulance, by being the ambulance transporter agency. And I believe that adding an officer position focused on EMS support and training is critical. Likewise, for the fire department, I recommend, in the, not in this budget, but in the future budget, I would like to recommend funding in the fire department budget to fund specific medical exams that are necessary for anyone who is serving as a firefighter and what the, due to what they are could possibly be exposed to within their jobs. So that is something in the future I would like to put into the budget. In the future, I think it is very important to look at trying to fund an additional full-time position in recreation. Right now, we have only two people running that entire department. And that is one of the areas where there's just an enormous demand for additional services that we just cannot, cannot meet right now. I think that we need to add additional hours, staff hours at the library. The library has extended evening hours, has Saturday hours. And this, they're doing it, they're making it work. But the schedule is extremely tight. And it's important to keep the library open. And having, and having additional staffing hours in the library is something that I would like to, to do in the future. Likewise, additional staff for the Council on Aging. Both, I, in the future, I would like to fund an additional driver in some capacity and additional hours for the cafe manager. The driver is becoming an increasingly important service that we provide. The, the transportation is becoming an increasingly important service, and we only have one driver. Likewise, there's, the cafe is very popular and people want us to be able to provide more. At this time, we are, we are at our limit for what we are able to do with the, the hours that we have funded. Additionally, we would like to, at some point, create two more promotional opportunities within DPW in a future budget. And again, not new positions, but, but upgrading, upgrading foremen's and trade, upgrading positions to allow additional foreman and trainers to be created. And finally, it's not in this budget, but once the town meeting approves a CWMP and once we know how you want to proceed with watershed permitting or sewer-ing or widespread implementation of IA technologies, it is going to be critical that we fund consulting services and/or a combination of consulting services and additional staff to, to implement whatever path is chosen for the CWMP. So in closing, we want, we are abiding by and want to strengthen our adherence to the financial policies. We want to maintain an operating budget within our means without taking all of the investment capacity for debt service and trying to balance that with the, the increasing demands that we're facing. I'm committed to a structurally balanced budget, even to the point where we're, where the town side is stripping out reserve transfers into the budget. It's critical to continue to invest in our employees to, and retain them and build their capacity. I think we have a very good system of communication and collaboration between the select board and the school committees and the finance committees. I hope that we are, I hope that there is appetite to continue with our joint meetings. I personally find them very helpful when I sit down to build the budget. I want to do, I want to do more of a pay-as-you-go. We're doing a pay-as-you-go capital plan, but we want to do more of a pay-as-you-go capital plan and, and build that into the cap, into the operating budget. But that is a long-term goal and that it's identified in the policies as a long-term goal to, to build that capacity into the operating budget. We want to provide you a budget that is set up for long-term sustainability and to grow in strategic ways. So it's important that we think about what is the most critical areas where we need to, where we need to grow, where we need to provide additional service and additional funds. We're, we're not going to be able to do everything that is desired. So we do have to be strategic with our priorities. And with that, I am going to stop my screen share. And I will say that there is a link on the town's homepage to the proposed budget that includes my written message along with the, every sheet for all of the departments. So if you have not had a chance to look at that yet, it's on the homepage and is available digitally. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. There is a lot of information on the website, which is, there's actually all the FTEs, all the number of employees, all the increases of the capital plan. There's, there's a lot, the sources and uses, everything is there as the draft plan. So that is very helpful. I appreciate that. So thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from the select board on the presentation? Yeah, Marie.
Hi. Really no questions at this point in time, but just some comments on a, a well-thought-out and a well budget for fiscal year '25. It's, it's no easy task to, to put an operating budget together and to, you know, make decisions on level service, level funding. It's, it's definitely a challenge while still trying to be fiscally responsible. I, I do have that concern with the non-exempt debt and how that's dropping off and being absorbed in, in other parts of the operating budget. And then we get to a point where, where we need to, to have that debt again. So keeping an eye on that certainly is, is in the forefront. I'm pleased with, I, I think, I think we're getting good results with the decisions that were made with respects to the changes in our financial the decisions that were made with respects to the changes in our financial policy. And as, as a municipality, um, I think that's, that's important to note that because of it, we are, we are, I think, more stable as, as a municipality with our, with our money and our budget. Um, but um, it, it looks good. I mean, and, and we'll see where the numbers fall when we have um, some more um, static data with respects to the cherry sheets and, and more um, definitive numbers from each of the school committees.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments from the board? Um, I, I had two things. Um. One actually was a sewer department um, uh, comment. So, the sewer department budget is still showing a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollar increase in the capital assessment for Wareham. And I think that's for the headworks and clarifiers, and I don't think that debt's coming on this year, so we just want to ca- monitor that. Those finalists are, things should be decided by the end of January, and we can take that off if it's not, if they haven't signed that contract. Um. And um, I was, I'm, I'm curious about, I think that we used to break out on sources and uses, the ISWAM host community fee that we were served, and now it's like in department, it's lumped in with some other things, so I wasn't sure if on the revenue side, if we left that at six hundred or if we're.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, in, in all of this, I, we did increase that. So, um, Erica, can you, do you remember off the top of your head? We did, that is not at six fifty. That, that was one of the things that we did increase as a source. Um, and I don't recall the number immediately off the top of my head.
Marlene, I have that information. We did increase from six hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so an extra hundred and fifty thousand. And that's included in the miscellaneous recurring.
Okay, yeah, and, and we, we used to be able to see it broken out, so sometimes what, you know, what that miscellaneous recurring is. And I, I think that makes a lot of sense, because and, and the one other question that I had is on the expense side of ISWAM, we level-funded the host community fee, which it's going to go from excess to like the budget, which is, that's not an increase, but we do know that there is a, there is a cost of living increase calendar year-wise, so um, yeah, we may have to increase that, and I think we did it at the fall this year to, to make sure. But I, I mean, I, I don't think that budget, that can be level-funded. I think it has to increase at least slightly to cover um, the cost of living increase, so. Yeah, that's, I think that's good, and I think that's um, we've been at it six hundred for a really long time, and the, the difference between the excess, which started at a hundred and fifty thousand a year, and then last year was over four hundred thousand, so we know it's coming, and so we might as well be able to use that as part of our budget, so I think that's, that's great.
Thank you. I am, I'm sorry, I, I meant, I've meant to flag that to tell you.
That's fine. I mean, overall, I think that we have some flexibility, and I mean, not flexibility, but I think there's things that are moving, and that the budget this year is going to require some work throughout the bu- throughout the season. We're not going to know what our final budget is until, till really it gets to be March, and we get like better numbers from the schools, better number from the cherry sheets. Um, and I, I think that makes sense. I do think one of the things that you touched on for things that we need to, that are not in the budget, is the concept of the waste, of the watershed permits and the CWMP. And I think we need to have some discussion around that, because ah, there's, there's a lot of work to be done, and we need to understand and discuss the budget implications for the health department for even figuring out what we're going to do for the watershed permits and other things. So, I, I think those things that you have on the list are, are good things to have, um, to have on the list, so. It's good. Um, anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, then. Thank you very much. We look forward for further, lots of further um, discussion, and you know, I, I, it's sort of, we got kind of like, this was a very fast-moving January for us, and um, I think maybe next year we'll maybe invite the finance committee to come for the budget presentation. We used to do that, and I think I totally blinked on that, so. Um, so the next item on the agenda is discussion impossible vote to transmit the operating budget and capital plan to the finance committee for review. Um, I put this originally on the agenda, because I wasn't sure if we were going to meet next week. Um, so we could postpone until next week, but by charter, we need to transfer the budget to the finance committee for review by February first. And I think in transferring it, we're saying this is the preliminary budget. We're not telling them that we're transferring the final budget, we're telling them we're transferring the preliminary budget, so they can start their review and, and, and we'll just keep working through it and be in communication with them over the course of the budget season, so. Um, that was kind of my thought in putting it here, so that um, the administrative office can get, working on getting the books together and get it, everything together for the finance committee. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about that.
As long as it's the understanding that it is very preliminary.
Right, and, and I just don't see that we're going to be able to make any decisions like next week that are going to radically change the budget. I mean, I think that's the point here, that there are some things that people want to discuss, so we'll discuss them and we'll make a list, and then we'll, we'll make sure to have a more final budget, you know, in time for them to make their recommendation. So.
Okay.
Anybody else, any comments on that concept?
I understand why you want to do it, but I also think that we should wait a week, because I would like to look at the budget in more detail, and I may have some questions that may end up coming up during the departmental process. Uh, but at the same time, I may want to get some of my questions out ahead of time. And so by me reading, by me having the opportunity to read the budget, and maybe ma- and maybe um, have, have my questions or whatever, I guess, I don't know, it's just, it's just been tradition that, you know, the charter says you will transfer by this day, and it just gives us a time, some time just to, just prepare ourselves, and but I can, I can understand that this is a fluid document, it's a working document, and nothing's final until it goes to town meeting, and we're probably not going to send a recommendation for the recommendation before the end of March first of April, but. Um, so I understand both, both points of view, but personally, I guess we'd like, you know, the week just to go through it and before we transfer, because I'd like to see what's out there.
Anybody else? Pleasure with the board. Anne Marie, you're unmuted, is that a signal?
No, I'm piecing together my thought. I think the whole idea too is to give the finance committee an opportunity to, to start their process and and for the, the TA's office to have enough, to have enough time to, to give, you know, to prepare it for them or to hand it over to them. Um, I don't see the harm in, I, I, in, in sending it over while we, like, and still being able to have conversation. We can, we can consistently have conversation about the budget.
Yeah, I think we should have the budget as sort of ongoing. I mean, we'll have discussion about the budget. We'll have a, at least piece of it at, at a different meeting, so we'll be having the departments come in to make presentations. I, is that the plan, Marlene, that the department heads with the budgets that have changes will be coming in and?
Yes, so my plan is that um, not necessarily department heads who don't have any cha- like if they're changing two hundred dollars, I'm just going to talk, I'm just going to
Right.
do that. Um, but the department heads with substantial changes, they'll come and kind of walk you through what's changing and why. Um, and I, and Erica and I will go over all of the shared costs and all of, you know, we'll go through each, each budget in the book, section by section. Um. Uh, either me and, me and Erica doing share costs and those with no changes, and then the department heads doing their departmental budgets that are changing. I will say though, that um, if the board wants to discuss this and not vote until next week, we can, we will still have the books ready for the finance committee by February first. So, I don't, um, I, I, I appreciate the extra time, I do, but um, if the board, if the select board wants to discuss this again next week, I totally understand. And if you want to wait until next week to vote, we can still put the books together.
Okay, so next week we have DEP coming at six, right?
Yes.
And, um, what else do we have? We're going to do the um, marijuana, I was trying to find this list today, and it was the marijuana, we're going to do the, like, the, the
Yeah.
finalize those things. I mean, we can put it on the budget, we can put it on the, on the meeting next week, and then we'll just find, we'll just, we'll like take a vote in case there's anything we want to change. So why don't we, because we're, we do have the meeting next week. Um, wh- why don't we just wait, and then we'll, we'll take the vote next week? And then, in the meantime, you know, if there's things that people um, are concerned about, or think that they might not want to recommend to the finance committee or whatever, um, or additional things that they want to recommend, we can put the BORN resolution in place for this select board. If you want to increase the budget and anything, you have to tell us where we're going to give the money, okay? All right, so let's, we don't need a motion on this, I'll just put it on for next week. Um, next is deliberate uh, and vote to execute the purchase and sale agreement for one seventy-one Claypon Road, and to further authorize the town administrator to sign, same on the select board's behalf. So, um, for those of you that um, could act uh, access the documents today, we did have a purchase and sale. Um, there was a slight change, because the first one that was sent, set up, authorized by a future town meeting, and we had the town meeting, so we took out the word "future", but um, uh, there, um, I think everyone, I think the documents have been presented, and so is there any questions or comments from the board? Marlene, are we authorizing you to sign this purchase and sale um, on behalf of the board?
Correct. So, both of, so the um, agenda items are kind of written as motions, so the first one is to authorize me to sign the PNS, and then the second one is to accept the deed.
Vote to execute the purchase and sale agreement, and to authorize this, like, the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board, and then?
Yes.
Okay. And there, do we have to, oh, the second is the deed, okay.
Yes.
So, any discussion or is there a motion?
Motion to execute the purchase and sales agreement for one seven-one Claypon Road and defer to authorize the town administrator to sign the, the purchase and sales agreement on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote. Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Uh, Mary Jane votes, yes, four zero zero. And then, our next item is the uh, deliberate and vote to accept the deed for one seventy-one Claypon Road and authorize the town council and the town administrator to take all steps necessary to affect the transaction. Any discussion or emotion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Peter. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ, yes, four zero zero. It's unanimous, and so happy to be moving forward with this. It's a red-letter day. All right then, um. Next, item ten is minutes. We do not have any, um, next is committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? Um, I, I went to the, I was at the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund meeting last week, and um, they provided their annual report. It did include the funding that BORN um, was provided for the um, for our portion of the um, headworks and clarifiers, so that was included in the annual report, which was voted. There was a very interesting presentation about water quality monitoring that's happening both in the marine environments and in the pond environments, and um, uh, they have, um, the Water Protection Fund has authorized one point five million dollars of the fund each year for the purposes of water quality monitoring. And the legislation allowed them up to ten percent, this is less than ten percent, uh, but the board felt that the continued monitoring of um, progress being main was really important, so. Um, and I think some of that information is on the um, the uh, Cape Cod Commission website. Um, I, I didn't get the slide presentation, but when I get it, I will forward it to the board. Uh, okay, uh, correspondence.
Correspondence, um, this says January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, so this might be, is this either way? This is our correspondence. Um, A, DEP Waterways Application, twenty-three Mariners Lane. B, two twenty-three Main Street, a butter's notice to raise buildings, formerly Bay Inn. C, Harrington Heap Donation to the Food Pantry. D, thank you letter from Anna's Pals. Uh, E, Upper Cave Tech School Meeting Minutes from eleven fourteen, two thousand twenty-four. Um, F, email from Jay Knowles regarding appointment to Housing Authority, and G, late license renewal notices.
Thank you. Uh, future agenda items related to correspondence or any other discussion? We will continue to communicate with the Housing Authority about um, getting a quorum or a joint meeting to make the appointments. And um, don't think there's anything else in the correspondence that we needed to respond to.
Madam Tia?
Yes.
From what I understand, the Housing Authority could meet next week. Uh, if, if we have room on the agenda, that they have the three members that can meet, they will have a quorum.
So, so that we've had, I, we, I think the town administrator's office has been communicating and said that when they are, can have a, a, when they can have a quorum, we can put it on the agenda. So, that's.
We just had to make sure that they post their end of it, not just we do ours, you know, they, that needs to be communicated back to uh, the Housing Authority to make sure they post by Friday afternoon.
Okay. Uh. Okay, uh, next meeting date, next week, January twenty-eighth, February fourth, and then February eleventh. And I'll see if I can get an updated schedule of meetings to the board pretty soon. Um, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Pete, Peter, second by Anne Marie. Roll call vote. Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ, yes, four zero zero. Eight twenty-one.